Like that whenever I just did the conversion to W P, it looked like that they were taking a little longer than normal. I mean, I I don't know if that was a thing. That was just an observation you had made. I'm just running some testing. Uh, I have to like make changes and deploy them. Uh, but I haven't deployed anything yet. I'm just kind of going through the queries and making changes. Going through that, um, let me pull up the cloudinary dashboard. Actually, we had a pretty good outcome so far for optimizing the images, let me.
Cool. How do you? What do you measure that by?
Uh bandwidth. Do the delivery report. Yeah, so our traffic wise, uh, we have, we average about three hundred thousand requests a day from Cloudinary. And for the past week prior to Friday, we've been averaging about, it looks to be about six, between sixty-five and ninety gigabytes of data transfer a day. This end, we averaged, this weekend, we averaged a third of that. We averaged less than thirty gigabytes a day of bandwidth.
Oh, that's awesome. And I'm sure it was one of the busier weekends too.
Yeah, no, we have, we, we had a, we had a surge, so. Not only the traffic, like, like, for example, on the twenty-second, which that would have been like Thursday. Three hundred sixty-three thousand requests and a hundred and thirty gigabytes of data transfer. And then that immediately dropped Friday to twenty-five gigabytes of data transfer.
Whoa, okay.
So we are saving a lot of bandwidth here.
That's fantastic.
And that should save on mobile data too. So, and I mean, and and then still, we're just getting started because I haven't even looked at the discover feed. This is just chat.
Oh, right. Right. The discover feed is deployed?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. And you're looking at ways to optimize it more, right?
Yeah, I, I shoot, if chat did this, can we imagine what happens when we do the discover feed?
True. Okay, great. Um, so what's your timeline on it? What do you think all?
I mean, I, I should, I should have something. I should have something finished with this today for sure.
Okay, cool.
Yep, so.
What else have gone on?
Uh, I was gonna ask for some feedback about the, the core flow that we were doing. Todd should have gotten two text messages over this weekend requesting feedback.
Okay.
For fire up. Todd, did you receive?
Two text messages?
Yeah.
See, oh yeah, from.
You muted Todd.
Yeah, I'm looking for the, I don't recall seeing this text come through now that you mentioned it. And they were supposed to come through at like at six o'clock or something on Friday or?
Yeah, six o'clock on Friday, the twenty-third.
Right.
To, yeah, since two seven nine, two five zero seventy-three ninety.
Oh, that's one of the other.
Yeah, sorry.
Let's see.
He had three numbers. I thought one of them was his primary personal phone too, and then seventy-three-ten.
Yeah, that's my personal one.
Okay.
And I should have got one for that too, right?
I see one of them is removed. I wonder if there was like an error in creating it, or maybe Todd, did you perhaps like, uh, reply stop to that number or anything for testing? You, uh, the number will be, let's see. Let's see, the number would be nine one six two six nine eighty-nine forty-five. I, I don't know if you might have. After that phone because I did, when I ran this Friday, it was showing that you were supposed to get a message at your primary number. I didn't actually send. You can try to send it again to troubleshoot if you're sure you didn't like opt out from that number.
He definitely wouldn't have opted out from the test phone.
Well, yeah, are you test? Are you looking at the test phone? Did you get anything from it?
Um, which number was it? Was it two seven nine number you said? Was the last four?
Uh, oh, last four seventy-three ninety.
Mess of phones here. Okay, here we go. Let's see what I got.
Let's see if I can find the logs here too.
No, I don't have a text on the phone seventy-three ninety.
Hmm, it says it was delivered. Are you sure?
And let's say.
Is it possibly in like a, a spam bucket or something?
What's the, what's the full phone number?
Two seven nine, two five zero seventy-three ninety. It says delivered in Twilio, so.
Yeah, I don't know what that, that means for me here. Um.
I wonder if, I wonder if this is something you can check with Mint about because I, I don't know if you're gonna have like a, a hard time talking to him because it says fully delivered here, like.
Yeah, I got you. No, I know. I just don't have any way of verify on my end. But you, was there another phone number?
But you're saying you don't see a test in your, in your conversation history?
Correct. There's no messages in my phone's text message lobby.
I'm gonna be posting these delivery reports.
Send us a test one just to, uh, test that phone, Jerry, just.
Okay, yeah, I can rerun it.
Just rule some things out.
Yep.
Um, you, you can rerun that one or you can do a different test number?
Yeah, I, I could, I can rerun the, the same test. I just gotta go back on the dates.
Does that mean it won't be till six P M. today?
No, I can do it now.
Okay.
No big issue there. But while I get that set up, looks like I might has his hand raised.
Yeah.
Yes, so John, I found the, so let me say my screen, I will show you.
Okay.
Uh, that I made the changes, but I missed to commit that file. I will show you. See here, this line here, you three day ago uncommitted changes. It is not in that element here. This is the changes. Let me do the, clear the full request for it.
Okay. Was there, um, other ones too that I was requesting?
I can see from your messages.
I can't remember now. I had, I might have messaged you some other ones prior to that.
Today we tested Friday and uploads messages that we tested on Friday.
Yeah, that's looking good. All good, um.
But I did not see any other message apart from this not stacking from you.
Okay.
And let me give my update.
Yeah.
Okay, so Todd requested me to create a document where all the notification document add who is the recipient of the notification. So like I'm creating a document where I'm adding all the recipient of the notification. There, so it's almost completed. I will share with Todd, apart from, uh, I am working writing test cases for subscription also.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll be very, very helpful.
Okay, and Todd, I did not see from you or so until any other notification changes.
So. No, no, yeah, I haven't, I have anything else for you to share.
Okay, so let me know if we required any other notification changes also.
Of course, we'll do.
Okay, Todd, I figured out what was going on with your, your phone number for your main phone. It, the format of it was, um, the format of it's different from the others, which that's fine. There's just, I gotta strip out like the parentheses and stuff from the phone number.
Where did that come from?
That came from Square.
Okay, so that's gonna be a thing.
Well, yeah, but it is nothing. It's just like parentheses and stuff I can extract from it. I just extract right now.
I'm just wondering, um, how many other, uh, customers, let's say even tech to you customers, even though we don't use Square, how many of them didn't get a text? That might change the, um, conversion rate tremendously.
Reason it was failing was not from like, it wasn't the, the Twilio request. It was whenever we were creating the record in the database. Because I only have the database field for the phone number to be as long as a phone number would be, like twelve characters. But with the spacing and parentheses, it was like sixteen characters. So it was getting truncated and that's what was throwing the error. So.
Well, could that also happen through the tech to you funnel?
If, if that database is designed to only allow like twelve characters for a phone number, possibly.
Ian, would you know the answer to that?
I don't understand the problem. Sorry, I'm, what exactly is the issue?
Parentheses in his area code and other characters that went over.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we strip all that stuff out before we send it to message bridge. Cause our, our, our phone number database stores numerals only. It's impossible for us to have that kind of thing go to message bridge.
Yep.
How, why is ours, why is it different for us, Jerry?
Oh, because I mean, it's a different database. Like I have, I have the phone numbers being stored in the Twilio native format, which is just like, plus, it has a plus, so it's not completely numeric. It's in the country code in the phone number. Um, yeah, Ian, what had happened is, uh, Square returned two different formats for the phone number. Uh, some of the numbers, most of the numbers were formatted fine, which was in the format I was expecting, like plus one number, no special character.
Yeah, I've seen it. There's not just two formats. There's like twenty at least. I've seen them with plus one in parentheses. I've seen them with dashes. It seems to be based off of how the company types in the customer's phone number, which may or not, may or may not even be a complete phone number.
I am now stripping out all the special characters except the plus.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So you're saying that there might be some stuff that.
You, you, I don't think you're gonna get characters. I didn't see any of those. When we, we did a, uh, in fact, you can do this in the business connection section that we have now. Um, when you did that last push, it included some code that I had added to look at customer contacts. So if we go to like Fire Up and then go to view details, and then you go to customers, you'll see the many formats of phone numbers in there. There's a lot.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it's, it's kind of all over the place, but I don't see any, any numerals. I do, or sorry, sorry, any digits. I just, just see numbers. So as long as we strip those out, and I think even.
I see, yep.
At a glance, you know, it may or may not include a one, but other than that, uh, it's, it's, we should be able to account for the logic necessary to format these correctly.
Yeah, well, these that don't have a country code, I should, a lot of these, I, I can like go off the home country of the business.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. See, they are, yeah, they are, they are different. Okay, cool. Okay, cool. This is stuff for me to kind of look at. I'm, I'm intrigued to know why they're different. It's not like somebody would be.
It's because the, so in Square, and Todd can attest to this, but my understanding is that a lot of functions with Square allowed users to type in their own phone number. And then, and then our staff, who were all different people, would type in phone numbers. And I don't know that there was any consistency to the manner in which they would type them and save them. And even the devices that they would use, whether it was a computer, a tablet, or, uh, like a square terminal, might store the formatting differently.
That's crazy how Square doesn't like.
Standardize it. Yeah, I get it. Um, yeah, I mean, we're pulling these directly from the database. I'm surprised that they didn't force formatting there either, but it's not too challenging for us to work around. Why we're talking about it, by the way, Ed walked into my office and he, uh, got two text messages from, uh, Fire Up, uh, for, uh, exactly what we're talking about for, uh, Core. And when he clicked on him, it just opened the Circles app. So the go dot circles dot com URL that he had didn't even take him to a landing page to ask for review.
Let me see where this is sending them to. This would send them to, ah, that's why. Darn it, go, it shouldn't be go dot circles dot com. I had it wrong on my local. Yeah, so this would be. Yeah, cause it go, cause go dot circle dot com is gonna send them to the, um, the fun, the, uh, one sec, trying to get this loaded. Yeah, go dot circles dot com is the, what you call it, the universal link, yeah. Uh, let me resend it.
So on one of my three phones, I did get the text message on Friday. It's like.
You're not getting it on the others?
Right, so I can see on one of the phones, uh, ending in, uh, it's this one. Eight nine four five. I did get a text on Friday at six. Thank you for shooting Fire Up. Put on my seventy-three-ten, much my personal one, no text there. And the other test phone, seventy-three ninety, did not get a text there.
It, I just sent another S M S to seventy-three-ten. You, you're saying you got nothing just now?
Hold on, hold on. Uh, yeah, I have. No, I don't have any. My seventy-three-ten number.
Maybe you did say stop at one point in history? Two messages? Is that possible?
It, it's definitely possible. We did some testing somewhere. Very possible.
Well.
Definitely not getting them.
No, this is, could almost be different because, um, Todd, you, did you ever get a message from that number? Like your contact just joined Circles? Do you see any conversation history? Can you type in this number and load in your conversation history with it?
Yeah.
Uh, nine one six, two six nine, eight nine four five.
Yeah, here we go.
You have no conversation.
Hold on, hold on, give me a minute. I was trying to. I think it's a spam folder or some sort. Okay, here we go. So, yep, got it this morning, nine forty-four. Thank you for choosing Fire Up. Got it.
Why did you not see it before?
I don't know. And we're trying to shi- show spam in some way.
Well, maybe it didn't, it didn't send. It's supposed to come from the automated, but one automated one did get received. Is that right?
Yes, in one of the phones.
Okay, that's awesome. Cause I would be inclined to say, well, it probably just failed everywhere. But it didn't fail everywhere. Okay.
So I, I, yep, I did get the test from, uh, Jerry, one, one minute ago.
Yeah, and one, you did get one on Friday.
On one of the three tests, one of the test phone, yes.
Okay, that is weird, because I would think that you'd either get none of them.
Yeah, right, yeah. No, one of three. I got messages on one of three.
Would the other two have problems with characters then, Jerry?
No, we, like it, the, I see the full delivery report at Twilio. So, yeah, that's.
That's not reliable. And, and his, um, seven-three-one-o number shows confirmed delivery on Friday?
I didn't, now his seventy-three-one-o, that was the one with the truncated string. That was, that was different.
What about now when you reset a test?
Right, Todd, and you just got a test?
I, I did got, I just got it, yes.
Yes, and, and those, those are saying confirmed delivery.
But I didn't get anything yet on the phone seventy-three ninety. Which is one of the test phones.
Are you using Google Messenger?
I think so.
Um, and did you check your spam texts?
Let me check.
Cause I didn't even know that was a thing, and I ended up finding a whole bunch of stuff in there.
Oh, boy.
Oh, you're right. They're in spam.
No way.
Oh, wow. That's just great.
That doesn't bode well.
No, doesn't. That's.
Shows I got him Friday at six.
What the hell?
It's in a spam folder of some sort, not in my main messages.
So Google Messenger is the standard default S M S that everyone has?
Hmm, well, I had a Samsung one, and it forced me to do an update, and that update transitioned me to Google.
So like, this is a new thing?
I don't know that it is. We may have always had, well, Google Messenger has been around for a while, but I don't know about the spam folder.
Is, is this something that we could check with the carrier and see if the carrier had anything to do with that?
Yeah, I can, well, so who's your carrier?
My carrier is Mint Mobile.
Ah, so is mine.
I hope that's all it is.
I, um, I, I think that I updated it at the beginning of the year because I see my, um, my spam starts February twenty-third, and I think that's about the time that it forced me to update to Google. But yeah, actually, um, so, uh, there was a guy last week. I want to say it was maybe Thursday or Friday saying that, um, he wasn't getting the one-time password. And it wasn't until he hooked it up to his computer that he was able to see it in a spam folder, and that's how I found out about it. Uh, but then he tried it again. It went straight to his text.
You know, I, I do want to kind of point one thing out though, is that the one-time password and these messages I'm sending come from two different places. The one-time password comes from Firebase, and these messages for our feedback flow come from Twilio.
Wait a minute, because I'm seeing on one of these phones here, it looks like that the one-time passcode is in the same thread as my Fire Up. Hold on, let me make sure I'm not wrong. Nope, I'm wrong, I guess. You're right, Jerry, it's two different places.
Well, this would certainly be unfortunate if our reputation funnel is kneecapped. What, what do we know about this? Is it a Mint Mobile only thing or?
It is possible that the carrier put a block on that phone number.
And then Google saw it as a block and put it in spam.
Good way to test just to, yeah, force send from a different phone number.
Yeah, so I, I, let me confirm, just kind of share something real quick. Um, so the two test phones that I have, um, they are both on Mint Mobile. Um, and it looks like one of them, iPhone, is the one that did receive the message on Friday, and it is the Android that went into spam. Because we're all, I'm just confirming, we're all talking about it from the first.
Yeah. Okay, um. Is that, is the number that is going to spam, Jerry, is that the one that had all those, uh, messages that came through that one day?
No, this is, this is a different number that I, that we use.
I wonder if it has anything to do with when we have, um, like, the external people doing the text when they do stop. I wonder if that gets tracked in some way and.
That's more plausible.
Yeah, do you have any stats? That's kind of where I was going with it. Like, do you know if that particular number had a high proportion of, um, of stops?
Cause that makes sense that actually any, any text that would be sent to this number would probably be a stop because it's not for external chat.
Any text? Or, or what do you mean?
Like, because this number is, is only used for external communications.
Uh huh.
And it's not used for external chat. That means that like, we're not prompting for people to respond to it. Yeah, so any responses I see from this, to this phone are stop or unsubscribe. So.
And you can, you can see those? How, how many were there?
A few, let's see. I would say like over a hundred for sure.
Over a hundred?
Yeah, cause this came, this was the number that we sent that big S M S blast that Zane wanted.
Right, okay. So we won't be using that one for the funnel?
Yeah, um.
However, is it a phone number based thing or is it an account based thing?
I am not sure. We could try a different phone number.
True.
We could try a different phone number, but again, that's, I, how do we fight for the reputation of this number? Cause like, this is sent for like user traffic. Like this is for user notifications that we're trying to do.
Do we have to use that number? Wouldn't we, can't we use any number?
Yeah, we can, but that's what I'm saying is that nobody is like, these numbers do not prompt a reply. And builds your reputation is if you get engagement and replies that are not just stopped.
But they're, but this is like a no reply kind of number anyway, right? It's not like.
I don't know if there's such thing as like.
Well, I guess, well, you can interact by clicking the link.
They, that's not tracked. I don't, I don't think that's tracked.
Right, but why would anybody reply? There, there's no reason to.
But that's kind of where I'm going, is that nobody would have a reason to reply, but the only feedback that we can get, like, I, I don't know that, I feel like it's more of a black box with the carriers use for determining reputation. But I feel like it's something, some factor of total messages sent divided by number of stops received or something.
Yeah.
But yeah, let, let's try a different number. I'm loading in a different number now. Just give me a, to make sure this number isn't used by external chat. Yeah, this, this is not used by external chat, so let's see.
I don't know if this metric is very helpful or not, but out of curiosity, I just went to the last twenty people who gave Tech to you a thumbs up through Core using the S M S link that we sent out. And out of those twenty phone numbers of people who did absolutely get the link and respond, about, I think it's twelve, use I O S for sure. Because when I type their phone number into my phone, their phone number turns blue when I send them a text. So some like, say sixty percent of them were definitely iPhones. Other forty percent were probably Androids.
So break it down again for me. What are you determining?
All I did, all I wanted to do was see.
Yeah, I, I get the methodology, but what, what did the results tell you?
Uh, sixty percent iPhone.
Or sixty percent iPhone what? Received a message or?
And got the link and got all the way through to giving us a thumbs up using the Tech to you Core system.
Okay, so sixty percent gave a thumbs up.
Yeah, very small sample size. It's only twenty. Well, no, no, this is a hundred percent of people gave us a thumbs up. Sixty percent of those people are, we're definitely using iPhones. Forty percent were presumably using Android. My point here is that the, out of this small sample size that I tried, what I expected to see if we had like a systematic issue with deliverability to Androids, that I would see like ninety percent or higher iPhones. But I'm not. I'm seeing almost half, which is what we would expect to see. So I don't think, my point is, the conclusion is, I don't think we're experiencing a massive deliver, deliverability issue with Core for Tech to you that I didn't know about.
But, or, do we send out, did we ever send out a mass marketing S M S from that phone number?
No.
Well, that would be a ask. It's a different phone number than what Todd.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, John, is that.
Yeah.
Like three weeks ago, Zane asked me to send out fifteen thousand S M S's within a span of an hour.
Yeah, that, that could do it.
Yeah, it certainly could.
Nose dive our reputation, whereas Core or Tech to you, we only send it to customers. So we might only send a handful every day, not.
Not getting rejected because they're asking how service went.
Right, and then it's like stuff like, oh, you know, we're giving away a free flight and people are like, what, you know, what the heck is this?
Yeah, um, I want to know if it's just that phone number that's been tainted or?
I just sent from another, like a nine-five-four number, Todd, that, that one.
I got that. Yes, I got it. No problem.
Into the, and not, not into the spam. Into the, and not, not into the spam.
Correct, and my main message will be.
Oh, good, good, yeah, then this is, that's gotta be it, and it makes perfect sense.
So which one got it now, Todd?
Uh my main phone.
I should, all three.
Did you? Uh, let me see.
And it came from a different phone number.
Correct, yeah, let's see. Yeah, got from test phone one. And. I, uh, oh, my woman, uh, yeah, I got, yeah, I got all three of them. No problem.
Well, lesson learned. Glad we figured this out before we deployed it.
Right.
Point, point in doing testing. So uh now the other thing, Jerry, is I think you're gonna probably need a little time to continue to work on the links, each of the. URLs that we've tried so far. I don't think we've seen any successful URLs actually load the page that asks for feedback.
So I'm curious about this, um, oh, I am writing to the QA database. But you're saying that ADID clicked the gogodcircles.com and it opened the app, it opened the app for him?
Yeah, yeah, he was standing right next to me, I watched him demonstrate it. I bet if he did it again right now, it'd probably still do the same thing.
Okay, well, then that means dynamic links work differently in Android than we do in iOS. Which means, I mean, that shouldn't be too hard for me to count for, just got to account for it now. Because that link, I don't think I have it configured as a dynamic link. But it looks like the app is just looking at the gogodcircles do- domain as a whole and using it for dynamic link tracking.
Verify that.
Yeah.
It 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 wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to to configure a subdomain through this function anyway. Something like core.circles.com, um just to keep the URLs isolated or separated.
Hmm, that's, that's what I was, you know, planning to, I just didn't wanna create all these crazy different subdomains.
Ah, I'm, I, I'm a fan, uh I'm personally, I I I think Tech to you, we probably have forty. Um I use them a lot. It's, it really helps me when I, when I get a random link sent to me for. Why, why did I get this? And I don't have any other information. The subdomain is really telling.
I'm not against it, I I was just saying for the like development, like pipeline, like while I'm coding it. Because it's like the same codebase. I'm just have to add this, you know, I'm gonna have to create a new DNS record. Now that we know how it works, like I don't mind, it's just that while I was coding this, I was using a subdomain that already existed.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against what you're saying one bit. So, yep. Um, I'm trying to open my method, what, what did I do with my messaging app in Android? I have an Android phone. I do not know where my messages app is.
Todd, maybe, maybe we could guide you.
Uh, I'm gonna try one little thing, I'm gonna try to download it from Play Store.
You can just search for the app, just search messages.
Yeah, it's not installed. I I don't have this phone connected to a carrier. It's just a dummy Android that I use just like confirming the layout.
I see.
So I had to actually install. Okay, yeah, there we go. Listen to this message now.
Okay, and so Jerry, you can, you can remove that phone number from our system, basically.
Yeah, um, yeah, I can do that. It's uh, I just have to go and update all the places that we're sending from.
Hey Jerry, I'm gonna message you before you remove that, um, just some thoughts before we we strip that out, but we don't need to hold everybody up on it.
Okay, yeah, you can message me on the side, yep, go. Fair enough, that um. That gogodcircles.com does open the app directly. Okay, so. That's good to know. Okay.
Hmm, no, and you said that was an Android thing?
Yes.
Okay, definitely good to test, um. Huh, okay, um. So what else there, so? So Todd, did the uh links work for you?
I I haven't gotten that far yet.
What what should you, what should you do now, Jerry?
Um, now what Todd can do is I have to. Send him a different link, actually, because this is tied to the QA database, so I have to send him a QA link. Uh but what I need to do honestly is I need to set up a a core domain like Ian was suggesting. Need some time to set up that subdomain now, and it will retest with the subdomain.
Okay.
Well, it's good, the SMS is sent at the scheduled time, that's what we come up with. Um, oh, we we figured out the phone number has deliverability issues of. We have confirmed the core is running at six o'clock and it is sending the correct messages and we're doing some cleanup on the phone number, so. So, so it is a win, there is progress, but now we've discovered there's more work to do.
We just, we still also have to uh figure out the image include, we don't have that yet, right now we're just sending a text and a link.
That's true.
Good point, okay. Any other tests you want Todd to run there, Jerry?
Uh, I'll get back with them whenever we get the subdomain set up.
Okay, dope. Alright, um, any other updates?
Uh, let me, let me check my notes to make sure there's nothing glaring to bring up. Um, no, that's, that's all I got.
Alright, let's continue. Uh, let's go to um Amin, can I get your update, please?
Yeah, sure, um, Friday I was about, like, I was um finishing up on the um, the Android work. That I was doing with the status bar, navigation bar and everything. So I went through like the whole app, making sure like, um. Not like forgetting a place where I need to take care of the status bar and um. The navigation bar, so the content or lathies will not be cropped, even like the headers where we have. The cancel, the buttons and, yeah, also like um, went through the friend connect, share the love, uh start convo screen. They're all, uh, okay, good, nothing is cropped. So, yeah, there is only one place that I still didn't figure out how to like fix it. But I, uh, I'm not sure, it's like a high priority to fix it or not, but like, uh, let me share what exactly.
Okay, and what happens if you're on the friend connect? The the back button, is it disabled or?
Uh, no, it's there, just like the whole UI is. I like um perfectly positioned and everything, nothing is cropped.
But doesn't, it caught, remember we disabled the back because it could create problems with the friend connect?
Uh, that that would stay, that would stay, uh, it has nothing to do with the functionality, more of like the layout, the work that I was doing.
Okay, I thought we, I thought we hid it, but I don't remember, did we hide it or did we just disable it? Cuz if we didn't disable it, we should disable it.
Uh, it was there, it was not hidden when I was working on it, like, I did not wait or did any change, as like, I went to the friend connect. And it was just working by default, like um, everything was there. I I did not, there's the functionality, what I was like working on, like, because I was like looking for UI issues. There was like no UI issues. I can, I can check right now, well, I mean, I just like wanted to show. This is the thing that I I have more this kind of models, you see this, they sitting here, it should be like somewhere in here. So it's that, this is the only thing that I still.
You're saying this is the one where you didn't finish up on this one?
Uh, this one is like share, like a shared component, so it's not only here, I've seen it, um. Where, let me see, or seven.
And 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 the way you'd want it is you'd want the modal, like all the way down at the bottom, is that?
Yeah, all the way to the bottom or wide, all the way to the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually, that's not even really that bad.
Um, this one works, um, no, I I think the one inside profile that does not, you see here?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, this is the the kind of model that I, I still didn't fix this, but other than that, like, um. Everything laid out and UI looks um exactly as it should be.
So this one, I saw, you could still see the trust tip through it, was it? Was it interactable? Like, if you tap on that?
No, it's not, it's, it's not like, because uh normally it should be like a white thingy here, like this. Has a white background, so it's gonna, I'd be having a white background, we're not gonna be having this issue, so I'm just looking. Have to do it uh in one place, because this is shareable component, it will be fixed also for other places too. Cuz all our models, they are white, so it will match.
And then that, that's everything after that?
Yeah.
There, there was a, there weren't any other?
No, like, I went through like a lot of places, um, I might like forgotten one place or two. That's why we're gonna, maybe we can do a build with it and see if it's all good.
Okay, awesome, um.
I wanted to show the friend connect, like, just to verify that it's everything.
Okay, yeah.
This is the friend connect we're talking about, right?
Yeah, this is one version, but yeah, does the back button, what happens if you hit the back button?
Nothing.
Okay.
It does nothing, this would work, of course, I will get back, but no, it's nothing, so. Hi, should I try?
Yeah.
Nothing happens.
Okay, good.
And, uh. Also here, nothing happens, so, yeah, so if, like, if we did it. Like if we uh disable the back button, then it should be.
Okay. So you think this will be good for all the devices, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we can, maybe we can get a QA build, yeah, it is up pretty high.
Uh, yeah, like, because now this is the status bar and you can like press, um. So I just need to push it a little bit down, so it's all the pressable. You have to, ready, yeah, okay, uh.
Is it, I mean, is it, does it have enough room around it?
I'm pressing right now here, nothing happens, because.
Yeah.
Be a little bit down, because like this is the status bar and with Android, you cannot press it. Like, I always say you can, even like if you have things here.
Hmm.
Android you can, so I'll push it a little bit down here, like the whole thing here, so it's, will be having enough pressable.
Oh yeah, and you were gonna see about maybe decreasing the height inside the two field?
Two field too, yeah, that would, with that.
Kind of balance out. Window. Okay, um, when you're done with that, will you do a QA build?
Mm-hmm, yeah, uh, so yeah, um, do you want me to do a Q, I'll do a Q build just like for this. Or, because there's some other changes that we did. I think, yeah, we can, we do the other changes too.
Okay, and Wells had a couple PRs also.
Okay.
I don't know if you reviewed those yet.
Uh, there was one, I reviewed one.
Okay, is that the one from Friday?
It was like about the onboarding, yeah. Where he fixed some UI stuff for small devices.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And.
Okay, he did some other kind of cleanup work on.
The cleanup work I'm still working on and pushing.
Okay, so that one hasn't, you haven't done a PR for?
Yeah, those, those are, are, I'm, I'm working on them, but there is one for review that is the one that I just mentioned for the onboarding on small devices.
Mm-hmm, that one's merged?
It was spending review.
Okay, but wait, I think I mean you did review that one, right?
Um, well, I went through it, I just like didn't press the approve button.
Okay.
But yeah, yeah, it's, it's all good, we can have it here in, um. In the next bit.
You don't have any questions or anything?
No, it's, um, no, it's, it's, it's a good, like, uh, the code that was added based on the high device, so it's gonna affect. Other devices, it's only gonna affect, if it's not really get that working, it's only gonna affect small devices.
True, okay, okay, good. Um. Okay, so then. What else do we have going on here, Amin?
Um, yeah, as for this, for this like Android layout, everything is, oh, good. Uh, uh, than that, that model thingy, um, yeah, and that's where I'll be looking into the, um. The issue with the sync contacts, if a user does sync contacts, it will be back, he needs to be taken back to the other, like, you know, onboarding. I'm not sure if you found, like, um, the issue we're having with this issue, uh, this user we saw in session replay. When he allowed contact in the SOT, but the contacts were not imported because he is in the SOT step now. And we don't do that there, so we lost the chance to get his contacts, so in this case, if a user.
Yeah, that one's a high, high.
Yeah, yeah, so if you don't wanna lock contacts from onboarding, from SOT, you know, onboarding will take him back two steps. Where we can import his contacts again.
Okay, so will you work on that one next?
Yeah, that's what we next, yeah.
Okay, I have a couple questions too, let me send a screenshot into development, I just sent it, so this might be for you and Jerry. Um, let's take a look, um, when you search for groups. Um, and I think we designed it like this on purpose, but. You can actually, actually, um, create like mega huge groups, if you see the screenshot I sent. Um.
You can like have two groups?
Yeah. What'd you say, Ian, that's scary?
That's scary, I didn't even think about that.
Yeah, that could happen at any time.
Uh, block for this, no, that's supposed to, like, yeah. We were supposed to put a block in it that if the group had more than twenty people, then we prevented that.
Well, we prevented like all the individual, sorry, individual names going in. Um, did we prevent it this exact scenario? Do you remember?
I thought we did, you know, too.
I thought maybe we did, see, what do, what do you remember, Amin?
Yeah, I, I think about like, I didn't, I remember like we did it like with the individuals, not with the groups.
Not with the groups.
Yeah.
Hmm.
But also like this one is weird, like now you selected two groups, but the chat is still, again, I think referring. To one group, not the other one.
That's true.
It should not be, um, I mean, it's happening because this is a use case that we don't want.
Hmm.
That's why.
It seems like the logical uh method to prevent it would simply be if you choose a chat that has more than twenty people that. You just simply can't add any more groups, like the groups don't even appear in the to list, if you start typing them, right?
Yeah, it is disabled, like I remember I walked on this when it's gonna be disabled. Oh, let me go there again and.
Oh my god, I can't believe nobody's done that yet.
Well, it's only a matter of time cuz I just did it.
Yeah.
Did, did allow you to actually start the chat?
I didn't go that far because this isn't production.
I, yeah.
I was thinking the same thing. Do we, do we have any big chats we contest in, in QA?
Yeah, yeah, we do, um, let's, you wanna give it a shot?
I swear, I thought we prevented this from happening, I thought we talked about this, like we knew this was gonna be an issue.
We definitely get talking about it on some level, I don't remember if it was this exact thing, I thought it was too.
What we should do, what we could do is uh test in QA with some groups like this and see what would happen if. Yeah, somebody did it. Actually, I don't think you, I I think there would be like an API error, I feel like it'd be sent, it would be sent like a malformed request.
Jerry, do you have any big uh group chats on QA phones that you've got there?
Uh, I think we do.
I'm, I'm in production, but I can switch if I need to.
Yeah, in QA, uh, let me. Yeah, in QA, um, let me switch to test light. But I'm pretty sure there's like one that's called test. And then there's, let me see. Yeah, like in theory, it would only allow for individuals to appear after you've selected a group. With more than twenty people. And then what would happen, what, like, if somebody selected Maggot Army and a person who doesn't currently exist in the Maggot Army chat? Would they succeed in creating a new group with ten thousand people plus one, or?
I think that's what would happen, yeah.
That's scary too. I don't think that would happen on just the grounds that it hasn't happened yet. Um, but I'm gonna, Ian, if you switch over to a QA environment, I um. Yeah, John said, no, that's what we created, right, I think, I don't think it, I don't think it would work, I think it would throw an error. Yeah, but plus one isn't possible, Maggot Army has ten K plus. Um, so I have this test group, Ian, if you switch to QA, it's just called test. Yeah, one second, I'm working on it. The uh, it's gonna take me a minute to get that, wait, what, oh, sorry, you know what, which build do I need to do to be? Thirty-three is QA.
So we should be able to test, uh.
I'm I'm in QA. So this test group with eleven thousand people in it?
Yeah, nobody's gonna get notified, we.
But I I mean, um. It's called, it's called test because it's just, it's just, this is just like a copy of what streaming, I'm assuming. So if I call, I'm gonna rename this to large group test.
Oh, you might not, oh, yeah, you should.
Let's see.
Do you know how I can reduce it, because I cannot, um.
Latte, lattegy?
Even better. It was, I I kinda got distracted cuz I found a bug while I was doing it. If you if you change here, actually, I'll, I'm gonna record this real quick, just so I don't forget it, if you change the group name. And then.
I can't even add another.
Hit the copy button for the link, I can't, of course, it worked that time. Dang it, when I hit the copy button, I was unable to close the keyboard. After I hit the copy button, it forced the keyboard to stay open, but now it's, now it's working. I'll come back to that, um, okay, so if we do a new chat with large group test. And then I add.
I can't even add another group, once I add the larger test group, there's no option.
Yeah, interesting, I don't have it either, once I add that group, I can't add anything else, so this is something that. We already have in thirty-three, that's just not in production yet. That's weird.
Wait a minute, what if I do it the other way? Oh, wait a minute, Ian, um, try adding a small group or just one person. Just put like my name or John, someone's name in your, in the two field, then add the test group. It'll let you do it.
And but in interesting, it just says add members to the group, this action will add this user to larger test. That's that's desired behavior. So let me hit, yes, and then let me hit uh test. And then send. So now what happened? Yeah, that's kinda cool, it just added, I added Seth to that group, that actually worked how you would want it to.
Well, why why would that be the way we want it to, instead of creating a whole new group?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, we're not supposed to be able to create a whole new group, I think adding somebody to the group is fine, but notice how there are two groups, Ian, so it wasn't just like. Test and Seth, it was two groups. Didn't happen, we can't like combine the groups. Yeah, it it just, I mean, I like, it, we have, we obviously had some logic in place for this though, because when I added large group test. As soon as I clicked out of the um two field and and went back down to the messaging area. I got a pop-up that said, you're going, doing this will add Seth Reader to this group. So we clearly have thought this through. Um, now, whether or not, you know, John said you're not supposed to be able to do that, I I agree, it it is kinda. Sketchy, like you could add two twenty people or something to that group, or you let's say you just type in like nine different single users and then you have a huge group. In theory, by the by the way that we did this, it would just add them to the group, but that might not be desired behavior if you have. I think we're pivoting away from what what this screenshot is, though. Yeah, but that that problem, we can't replicate in QA, the Maggot Army and Vanderpump rules, in in QA, you cannot type in a group. And then another group, it doesn't work.
Once you type in group, there's no other way to add anything else, but if you if you start with a single person, and then you can add a group to it.
Then how did we get there? I don't understand, what build was the screenshot from, what can we do to? Yeah, John, John sent a screenshot, I don't know if he was the one that that produced it or not.
Must be, that's from thirty-two.
That's in production.
Yeah, it's in production in thirty-two.
Okay, then we should be able to go back to. If we're saying was magically fixed in thirty-three, then we could try and can we can we produce it in thirty-two, not send a message?
No, I can't, I can't let those two groups in there like John showed.
Thirty-one is also a QA build, if we're thinking it's something magically fixed in thirty-three, we could go back to thirty-one to confirm it once we figure it out.
How the hell did you on get that?
In in production, I I was able to do it too.
You are, I am not able to do it.
In production? How weird. I don't know, I'm, I was just on the App Store version, I'm not sure what build it is. Well, yeah, that's thirty-two, but you can, you can go to thirty-one then, thirty-one is a QA build and you can try there. Oh, I can try thirty, yeah, sure, I can do it.
Sorry, say that again, like, I want to reduce that issue where you can add multiple groups, be groups.
Are you unable to re- reproduce that in production right now?
Not production, I mean QA.
Um, in QA, we've not been able to reproduce it so far.
Ian, you're, yeah, you're in QA and you can't, you can't do it, right?
So in thirty-three, I was unable to, and I'm trying to install thirty-one right now to see if I can there. If, assuming that's production, then yes, I was able to do it in production.
How did you do it in production?
I, I just did exactly what it looked like, I typed in Maggot Army and then I typed in a different name and both of them showed up and.
I have thirty-two on iPhone here and on my. On my personal phone, and both Android and iPhone, I cannot reproduce.
Okay, well, then, what about it, can you try the exact same two groups that John shows inside of the message? Maybe it's something. That's weird, uh, thirty, uh, thirty-one, okay, I'm in thirty-one now, let me see if I could do it in thirty-one. Yeah, so in thirty-one, I can do the same thing where I type in a name and then I type in a huge group and it just tells me I can add. A user to that group.
Let me, I'm 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 in thirty-two.
And then if I do.
Once I put Maggot Army chat in the two field, the cursor is no, will no longer place itself in the two field, I can't add anything to it. Correct, like, it's just not possible for me, I can tap into all I want, next to the Maggot Army that's in the two field. But I can't get a cursor in there to add something else.
Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch back over to production real quick, and I will screen screen record.
Yeah, yeah.
Just show you what it looks like. Well, it's, I'm out of getting out of the App Store, so, uh, whatever the App Store version is, yeah.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Been sitting here listening, but uh, I got a call coming up, does anyone need anything from me right now?
I don't think so.
So. Little builds that need to go up or anything?
Thought I can't do it in production now.
Yeah.
Now, it's now I can't.
Perhaps you could have been in some other version?
Oh, no, I'm a hundred percent sure I was using, cuz I only ever have the App Store version on my phone, ever, yeah. Now, unless we pushed an update last night, then no, I I was absolutely in the same version.
Right, now you can't do it, now you can't reproduce it in thirty-two.
Nope, I sure, yeah. Oh, okay, so the bug is that it left the list up for him, which is not what it's doing to me. Not not now, not, I mean, it was.
Yeah, I think the list stays there because the. The autocorrect uh left a word there, so that's why the list is there.
Well, whatever it is, it's inconsistent, so it's gonna need a little attention, I mean, obviously, I was able to do the exact same thing that John is. And now I can't, switching between test light and then back to production. So there's something going on, we're, which, I think we just need to take another look at the logic that we have there. John, message saying he was something about autocorrect, he said that he left the word Vander in his two field. It looks like that had some influence over it. I I tried that same thing just now and and that's not working for me, I mean, it's the, uh, it 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 did, it does leave the word Vander inside of that. Oh, oh, now it just, now it did it, oh, man, it's so hit or miss, so now I have, holy shit, that's scary. I can add finance and startups to the Maggot Army, god damn, that's nuts, all I have to do is hit yes and they would all merge. If, is there, can we, do we have any test groups we could try this with, I don't think it would work. We we probably need to create another really big um test group. In QA? Yeah, I would just, I I think we need two large groups. Yeah, some, I'm thinking it's not going to work. I'm, I I think the opposite, cuz it did success, it gave me the exact same pop-up right now, it just said, do you wanna add finance and startup to the Maggot Army chat? That's that's the prompt I got, and if I hit yes, I speculate it would have done the exact same thing that it did when I added just one person. I don't think that. I mean, I I think it, I mean, it's not supposed to allow us to do this on the front end in the first place. I um, I sent a message, call, I just sent a message, here's another big group, Ian, you're in a group. I have to switch back over to test flight, let me do that real quick. I'm gonna go to thirty-three. Um, because now that, for for whatever reason, I think I think John's right that it does have something to do with Vander, it, but it's not consistent, it doesn't do it every time. The the test flight installs are way slower than the App Store. You notice that, like the download, like half, half the time in uh in production? Yeah, it's way slower from Tesla, like, uh, I like I, in 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 the App Store, I have the app installed in. Ten seconds, this is like thirty from test flight.
It always takes probably at least a full minute. Time to download from production, yeah, versus iPhone, it takes seconds.
Inconsistent. I'll report it to Apple so they can promptly ignore me. Okay, I am back in test flight, here's another large group, all right, let's see if we can. Do this, uh, what streaming and large group test, okay, so let's start with the what streaming, so create a chat. I can't repeat it now, again, in test flight. Or in thirty-three.
The only thing that I'm able to do regarding a chat with a group is. Start with adding, if if I add a group, I can no longer add anything else in the two field, if I start with one person. In the two field, I can then add a group, but then when I go to, it tells me that that person will be added to the group. That's all I can get out of it, can't add multiple groups.
I'm struggling to repeat it, I I I cannot get it to do it in in test flight, I got, I got it to do it again. And you're thirty-one, Ian? Yeah, I'm in, I went back to thirty-three. Well, thirty-one, what thirty, it almost sounds like it may be fixed on thirty-three or? It might be, because I was, I don't know, I mean, it it's definitely, there's like a bug of some kind that happens on the front end. It it and you can see it in John's video, it leaves, the reason why it's possible is it leaves the group check behind. It's not because you can add more than one group, it's because the, see, like, watch, watch his video at the, at the eight-second mark. He finishes adding the Vanderpump Vibes group chat, and instead of what it's supposed to do, which is as soon as you add a group chat, you're now looking at the text of that group. Instead of looking at the text, it instead reloads a list of more groups. That's, that's the reason for the failure, it's not because you can successfully type in a second name. And that, and I was able to repeat that exact same thing, it's, it's that we're, for whatever reason, not triggering. The proper load of the the text of that, of that chat, like the chat's not coming up. I I thought maybe it had to do with the autocorrect thing too, let me try a different word. It's like not a word. No, that's not it either. Hey, well, I don't know how much longer we need to dwell on it. We have a video of it failing, so I, I think it needs attention. I, I, I don't think that like the fact that we can't get this to happen consistently on thirty three is really a uh, a sign that it's fixed. If we didn't explicitly fix this before. Oh, I got it. I got it in thirty three. Okay, perfect. So large group text. Now I need to see shit.
Okay, you said.
But the only problem is now I don't see another large group here. I'll, I'll screenshot and record what I have. So I have this like I selected the large group and instead of it loading the text, just like John's video, it loaded up a list of people and groups. But the only problem is oh wait, you know what? I can hit the plus group button. Can I type in there now? No. Ooh, can I, ooh, I can type. Okay, so test. And it's gonna load another group. What's streaming QA? Yes, I'm going to merge them and I'm gonna hit done. And I'm gonna do a test huge merge message. And I'm gonna hit send and it like crashes. It didn't crash. It's just, it like glitched and I can't send the message.
That's what I was thinking would happen.
Yeah, it's definitely not working. Um, what happens if I hit the share button? Let's try to, what if I, okay, can I do? Share. We'll share a place. Let's see what that does. Share something nearby. Oh, I can't, I can't hit the send button because the send is kind of broken already. So yeah, it's pretty busted. Um, I mean, I definitely have like partially broken the entire front end. Um, but I, I, if I hit cancel, it all goes away.
Right. Was a malformed API call, I was assuming.
Well, this is interesting. I'm gonna send this, this video. Um, do you guys see in the large group text or sorry, large group test? Chat, what's the last message that you see? The most recent one that was sent in there?
Uh, in the large group?
Yeah.
I just did a lot of nonsense.
It's gibberish? Okay, good. It's for whatever reason that gibberish shows up as gray instead of blue to me. And also.
Is it possible to turn off that autocorrect to make it not add an extra word like that in the two field?
Yeah, autocorrect, I think autocorrect should be disabled on, on like the two field.
Yeah, that, no, that would solve everything.
When we need to disable it on like the uh, the spotlight screen too. The only place that it should be, that, that autocorrect should be enabled is like when you're typing out a trust tip or if you're typing out a chat message. But things that, it was like, it, for example, like autocorrect for name search fields because things can be spelled very.
Yeah, that's a recipe for disaster. So I mean, is there an, a method that you know of where you can disable autocorrect in name search fields?
Yeah, like we can, we can do that. We can disable the autocorrect there.
Okay, we should leave it in the two, like not the two, but the text input field.
Wait. Yeah, that text input will be having no autocorrect there.
I think it's search field, John, should, should not have autocorrect. So it's like when we're searching for places.
It's, it's already false. Like in that example, it's, it's already false, uh, autocorrect.
Um, what is it doing then? You saw the screen record?
Yeah, I saw that. Um.
That, whatever that is. Um, I had two people report that problem, uh, if you recall from a couple of weeks ago where you can be typing a message and then the cursor just starts jumping around and trying to autocorrect your word without you touching the word at all. Um, two people reported that on Friday. So if that's not autocorrect, what is it? And, and can we turn that off? Is it predictive tech? Is that different? Like there's, is there a difference between autocorrect and predictive text?
I'm not really sure, but like this seems just like it has no sort of auto correct. It's it's because like after you select an icon from that list, we do clear the text. So we clear it. And I'm not sure why that's not treated. Maybe there was something interfering. I'm not sure if it's related to the um autograph or anything like that.
I have a feeling it is. I'm I, I see here in the video, it doesn't show like clearly that's what it is. Um, here, here's why I think it is.
Um. Well, I, I, there is a known issue with the inputs to react nation when, when you type really fast into enter. The cursor, like things are breaking and I get, and I think this is how it can be produced. You have to type really fast and do intro.
But I didn't type the answer fast. I waited for the search results.
Hmm.
Here's why I think, here's why I think it has to do with Apple's predictive text because anytime you search a name in the, in the, like the spotlight people screen, if you leave the cursor see, see where the cursor is left at the end of the last letter. Um, it tends to want to keep predicting for you. So if I tap somewhere else. So what hap- it's really annoying in the search field when I'm searching for someone's name on the spotlight people screen. If I type three letters of their name, it will try and autocorrect their name. And or even if I type a space like it's, as soon as I ta- tap anywhere, it, it, it actually like changes the word for me. In this case I think, I, I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but like, I feel like it was holding that word. And because we remove the cursor maybe it has something to do with us removing the cursor, right? Because I picked a, a large chat. Um. It still held the word when I tapped.
So so there's like this thing, it's called autocorrect, which is already set to false. And there's other thing which is also complete.
That's the one, autocomplete. I was calling it predictive. Aut incomplete. That is a nightmare. I can't stand it. Can we, let's turn off autocomplete everywhere in the app.
Everywhere in there.
Yeah, it's absolutely horrible. It's, but that's the thing that's causing the bug for the girls that reported it Friday. Where thing was jumping around, that autocomplete is a disaster.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I feel so much better now. I'm glad you identified that. Can you get, can you get rid of it everywhere?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Remember Ian, the problem we were having? You've, you've seen it, the one where it jumps around.
Sure have.
Yeah, that's the autocomplete. That's what that was. Cause.
That's gonna be nice.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's gotta be a fix of some kind that will get rolled out to allow that to be, because it's a nice tool if it doesn't conflict with something else.
Yeah, they rushed it. They've been rushing things lately and a lot of stuff's buggy.
Yeah, I'll be right back. I gotta make a call.
Good. Okay, so then so maybe this won't be a problem we need to solve for because without the autocomplete it won't really be an issue.
Uh, yeah, hopefully. Um.
I think, I think that'll, I think we'll be safe. I'm feeling pretty good about it. Um. I noticed another minor bug. Maybe this is a front end thing. Um. If I leave a group chat that is a pinned group chat, it's not, it doesn't show back up at the top right away. I have to like leave and come back. Is that all front end?
Yeah, I think it's front end. It's, well, but it's tricky. Because this, this is the cache. I mean yeah, um, yeah, it is a front end. I was just trying to think how to fix it and why it's happening. And the thing is, is like when you leave it, the cat, we need to add that go back to the cache. But the tricky part is is the group you leave it right now was in the suggested group in the first place to bring it back there. So the solution would be i- is like every time you leave a group we're gonna, we're gonna do a refetch, which is gonna cause and it, another appear call to fetch that uh, suggests this list uh, grows again. So you might be seeing skeletons there. If you leave the group and go back so fast, you might see a skeleton there because we
Mm-hmm.
It's in, to get the new data.
Hmm.
Talking about the lobby?
Mm-hmm.
We want to make sure that we don't, that we keep in mind that if we're doing an optimistic response and we do a refetch, it's possible the user may not be removed from the group when we refetch.
No, we're gonna do a refetch when everything, this is not optimistic response.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I, I would say it's low priority because like it doesn't hurt anybody and it's, it's there when you go leave and come back, right? So um, I was just wondering, okay, uh, uh, let's not worry about it because again, it's low. Um. Did you already get the whole auto, not autocorrect, but?
Yeah, I'll already done it. It's a one line change. So that's complete will be disabled.
Fantastic. I'll, I'll test that when it when we get the QA done. Okay. Um. Okay, and then you're gonna go to the, as soon as you're done with the nav bar thing on Android, the onboarding contacts thing, right?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, um. Let's uh, let's go to Wells. Hey Wells, can I get your update?
Yes, sir. Pretty good stuff.
Very good.
Let me share my screen with you. Okay, so first of all, this PR about the onboarding is merged. So before we have problems like this this and this on the smaller screens and now everything looks like this. By the way, I have been onboarding a lot recently and in, in different devices and on my Android app always using a smaller device. So this is coming in pretty handy, pretty, pretty useful stuff, pretty good, working.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, sir. Also, um, I did open a PR uh, about the stuff we did on the profile screen. So before it would crop here the text and it would be pretty called it in the bottom. So now it looks like this.
You said the PR is open?
Yes, sir. This is open and ready for review.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir. And I am working on polishing the other stuff that we have worked because even though it is working, we, we have to keep uh, uh the best standards to meet circle goals and et cetera. So I, I am getting everything a- as it should be in correct styles and et cetera and optimizing everything, make sure everything works, making sure there's no side effects and et cetera. And as soon as I'm.
Are you talking about like what we were doing with the images or what, what do you refer?
Yeah, so this is regarding the cards. So right now I'm working on getting this to be good to go, no side effects and et cetera. So the message.
And what about, and the height as well? Like what about that part of it?
Yeah, about the height, I have not looked at that to be yet. And I have some notes about stuff for me to do. Actually, there is plenty, plenty, plenty of stuff to do. But I have some reminders here for us on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um.
Want to tell me a couple of those? What, what do you have?
Yeah, so I have to remind you about the inner circle or inner circle. That is for the place for five sharers, top sharers.
Yeah, what, what, what were we gonna chat about?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, we would talk with Jerry about that on how the, the data for that is going to be.
I thought we agreed we were just gonna um, have it on based on the most cares a user gets.
Okay, sounds good. And, and if I'm not mistaken, Jerry is working on that currently on.
Yeah, let me get that, let me, let me see that.
Oh, it's done already?
Yeah, yeah, it's been nothing. I guess I just forgot to send it.
Okay, cool. So yeah, I will, I will take a look into that and, and, and see what I can do pretty soon. Also, John, you mentioned about me working with Chantel on the add image check in. Uh, so um. On the check in here when we go do a check in, you wanted us to take a look at this screen.
Yes. And also the whole, the picker itself, like I can't remember if we ever were able to crop like right here, like be able to edit the size or is this, we always just got.
Yeah, no, we, 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 we did not implement that. So we went with um, um, before it would show the image in a way that will not represent how the image will be showing on. So we decided to show it exactly as it is, which is the keeping size of the image and implementing the crop in a near future. So we went by parts on that.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
So we got the first, but we didn't go through the prop and other stuff.
Okay, let's see if Chantel can help improve our design here a little bit because it's not super intuitive. Um.
Yeah.
Call Chantel.
Hmm.
Did you, did you improve on this at all since Friday?
Um, I, well, this already, eh, the way it's looking isn't the way it's designed.
Uh.
Yeah, so there's that.
Okay, will you, we will get with Wells on it and?
Yeah.
Okay. And then how, how do you um, need, uh, what do you need Wells to be able to display the images in their full height with?
Uh, yeah, not yet. That is something, that is something else to.
Do you need anything though from Jerry or Oment?
Oh, Jerry, were you able to get the, with the half of the image on the discover feed? Uh, trust tip images?
I have to make a look into that.
That's just Jerry. Yeah, I walk on that part.
Okay, so cool. So once we have that done, I can, I can start testing it on the um, the discover feed. And since I will be modifying the cars, I can test the cars everywhere else and see what I have to do to not break in other places and what I have to do to implement this in other places. So perhaps having this image to be added also in the fo- the, the main feed images as well. And.
Sure. Um, yeah, I think, I think that'd be great. Now how far did, um, did you get on this Oment?
Yeah, I will, I will give it, I will give it to you.
Okay. So he should have that ready for you Wells. And then what else would you need to do?
Yeah, and also I mean, there is other thing, other complete different thing. That is, um, John, what you mentioned about, uh, we asking Amit about the most optimal way of refreshing the business opening hours. And, and getting tell whether the business is open or closed by the time the user is looking at the profile.
That's right. Um. Why don't you show him what we're talking about so he has an understanding?
Yes, sir. So Amit, can you see my screen?
Yes, I can too. It's good.
Awesome. So I mean, let me find a place here. Okay, so you see here how we have open hours for the business?
Hmm.
Yeah, so we would like to show the user if the business is open or closed right now. And we believe that the Google API has that information and can show that was. So we were discussing whether we should perhaps use the data from Google or if we would uh, do that ourselves, keeping track of it in our, in our in our uh, backend and, and, and displaying a UTC time for the, the front end to be doing calculations with that and be showing the, the stuff to the user. So basically we want to, to investigate what would be the best way of displaying if the business is open or closed. Considering the, the time zone.
Currently, we are returning you what uh, Google is returning to us.
Okay, so everything that we were turns, we are having here in front of that.
Yes.
Right, except open is hardcoded on our end.
Yeah.
Can you check, will you check and see if it's returned as open or closed?
Um, yeah, I believe I have checked this on. Um, yeah, I believe I have checked this on Friday.
So me who responds and back and returning to you.
Uh, yeah, so yeah, yeah, I I I I remember that we checked this on Friday. And this hours here is an array of written stuff, so. Um, this is, there, there's no intel on the front end here. We're just getting an array of data there. And I did not see anything regarding whether the business is open or closed or anything regarding any ETC. The date time that I could use on the front end to do any intel on on timing. For actually knowing. If the business is open or closed. So what what I mean is, um, from what we have current on the back and John, I I didn't see anything that would make us. Calculate if the business is open or closed.
Amit, can you tell us if Google API is telling us in real time? If the business opener close, I think they are cuz like a lot of apps will show. The word open would be green and the word closed would be red cuz like it's getting that information in real time.
I need to hit the API and check one.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a question for uh Amin too while we're here. Show me, uh, Wells, show me the um. The full profile. Yeah, go, go ahead and click on the profile of the place. Yeah, just this one here is fine. And it's kind of the trust tips. Actually, this isn't exactly where I was gonna look. Actually, go to the um people, the search, the people finder screen.
People finder screen, okay.
And then, um. I mean, I had a question if you're here. I didn't, we don't want to make any changes without your input on font color cuz it's, it's a small change, but I didn't want to uh. Implement, it looks like, is this implemented here, Wells? The names are in gray. It could just be the um Google meets.
It could just be that the the font is small. So you kind of, I kind of merged with the background and it looks grayish. But yeah, it looks grayish on my screen too, but I think it's fine.
Does look grayish on your screen. Uh, anyway, what I wanted to do, I mean, was. All this font, that's like soup is white, like uh all the way white on a dark background. I was gonna make it a very, very light gray. And um, I just didn't want to do that without. See, like, I didn't want to do a global change everywhere. Like, let's say all these headers, for instance, if we were to change those to a gray, what, what would?
Like, the headers, those like contacts and circles, friend of friends.
Yeah.
Do we want to change them to uh gray?
Yeah, we have a light color that we picked. Just so this, this contrast isn't so stark. Would that, is that gonna be a global change? Because you're shared.
Hmm, no, no, it will be only here. Let me just verify as well. Yep, it's gonna be only in the screen.
Okay, what about if we did it on um? Like some of the discover feed cards on profiles, things with dark backgrounds, that what about here, for instance?
That would be like when whenever we have a card, it will be applied there. For example, the discover, the home, right? So it's gonna be one change, it's gonna be applied in both places. Well, we'll have to do it in a lot of files because each file is handling our type of profile. So, yeah.
Okay, um. It's not urgent or anything, it's just, it it definitely softens it a little bit, looks. Little more pleasing. I just didn't want to do something that was gonna affect screens that we didn't want affected. So if we, let's say we made the trust tip font right there, instead of it being completely white like that, we used our lighter gray. Would it all, would it only affect the trust tips right here or would it affect fonts elsewhere in the app?
Uh, no, I think it can only affect trust it in, in here, the feed. The discover and maybe, maybe inside the profile. I'm not really sure about this. But maybe like a slight chance, maybe, but not really sure. I have to look too good, but in the top of my head, home and discover feed for sure.
Okay, that would be fine. On home screen as well, like on the activity feed, you mean?
Yeah, activity feed, yeah.
That'd be fine. You can't tell through this Google meets cuz it looks gray already. But if you look on the phone, cuz the iPhone has a good screen, you know, it's like super white on black. And it looks ridiculous, like that actually looks better than Google meets cuz it's like kind of coming through gray a little bit. So that that was what I was gonna go for. It was like a slight gray, but cuz the white just looks. It's just not, nobody does it. I've looked at other apps and they don't do that. They have a slight, it's a slightly gray. So um, so Wells, I guess we're in the clear then to do like where your cursor is. And also like on the cards, the trust tips um to change some of those unless you have any concerns.
Yeah, uh, I mean, it, um, there is two different ways of doing that, right? So currently. We have global styles and we tried getting the information from there. So we can either change there and you have a lot of side effects and change everywhere, or we can add a new uh color. And as I mean, mentioned, go place to place it changes, for example, going inside the car, changing, changing on the car. And then going it, for example, on the, the spotlight people's screen and saying, changing it. There to this new color instead of using the other main one. So it is, it is. Um, doable that way. It is just um work intensive.
True. What do you, what do you recommend to me? Should we? Do it on a global? Is that gonna change the font color on screens that have a white background in some cases?
I don't think so because things that have white background will be using dark text, right?
True.
Oh, we, I think we can change that white and see how that goes. You just don't like to spray.
Wells, how are you describing the way we would do it in a more global way?
Yeah, so um currently we have some color definitions that we use across the app, so we have the.
Okay, so I see what I mean, that's inside the team.
Yeah, inside the team. So for example, this blues we use for circles, these are branding, a blue that we use across where to keep that. And we kind of have that for lights. And if we do not want to have pure white. Basically anywhere, then perhaps changing that, changing there directly is an idea. Cuz it's just gonna change from white to a little bit less white, right? So.
True, yeah. Yeah, it'll be almost white. Uh, so you would recommend doing it in the, what did you call it, in teams?
The team, like, yeah, we have a team of the colors. So, yeah.
Can we try, can we see what happens if you change it there and see what it does here on your emulator?
So yeah, uh, that's the thing is like that theme there is like, um. It might causes other places where you don't think about it, it will change the color in a way you would not think about.
That's what I'd be worried about.
Yeah.
So don't do that?
Probably, yeah, we don't try not to that.
Okay.
I mean, introducing a new color and in this team and go and use it where we want, that's fine. But like, for example, you'll be thinking that brand, if the behavior, use the value of it, it will be changed everywhere. Sometimes, not sometimes, some places will work, some, some places will not be the the color you be expecting. So it's, it's not like a consistent things because like this team thingy. It was like from the beginning of the project and it was. It's like since I guess Austin and Jim. There and it's still, it's really old, so.
So it's not best practices?
In a, like, it is the best practice, but like in our project, in our case, uh, would advise not to touch it. Unless if we have a capacity of like where we can really work on it and have, we can have it like um. Really solid and every color will be expected and everything.
Okay, yeah, we don't spend all the time on that. So then I guess we'll just, I'll just handpick some places, Wells, like the headers for. Like on the people's spotlight screen and it's the fonts there and maybe fonts for trust tips. Yeah, like the, those kind of fonts there.
Yeah, but also John, about the, the changing directly on the team, I mean. Um, it is, a- as everything in engineering, it is a big depends, so it depends. But at the end of the day, the, the goal of the teams is basically. Centralizing the main decisions really regarding colors in the app, so we can easily change them and have them. That those changes be applied everywhere. So for example, when we have a light team and a dark team. So we are creating teams so we can change that, so we will change, for example, all the blues and the activity here to be green, for example. So the main idea of having a, a thing, for example, having a white color be applied everywhere in the app. Uh, is basically, so if you want to change that perhaps in the future, it is there for it. So on this case that we want to make it so the whites in our app are slightly less white. To be more integrated with the rest of the team. I think this would be a scenario in which I think it's worth taking a look at the team and changing it and seeing how that goes. And so perhaps somewhere it doesn't work for some reason. Uh, first, then actually handpicking everyone else because the team is there for helping us in these scenarios, I believe.
Uh, so you like the idea of. Taking a more deeper dive into the fonts in teams and getting them all. To be all understood is what you're saying.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's worth looking at that.
For the long run, I I do agree with you, um. Well, okay, let, after, after this stand up, let's um work on that a little bit as a test. I I would. I'd like to see what happens cuz like, for instance, if you scroll on this feed a little bit. A, a movie or a place, keep going a little more. Yeah, stop on there where it says John Wick, like, for instance, that would end up be, John Wick would end up being gray, right?
Not necessarily.
Cuz I was gonna say I wouldn't necessarily want that to be gray. Me, I mean, maybe it wouldn't be bad, though. Maybe it'd be fine. So, but cuz if we change all the whites. Fonts to the like gray, doesn't it pretty much mean everything, including John Wick right there?
Not necessarily. It does depend on how we are using that. So for example, for the cards, I know that some of the colors here are. Are not coming from the team, so I think this is not coming from the team, the R is not from the team.
Okay, it was asking the R, like, so the R wouldn't be a problem either.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be a problem either cuz it's not coming from the main team. What I think is coming from the main team is, for example. This text here, this main titles here, this other. More standard stuff, some more texty stuff.
Could it be anything other than a font like the nav bar? Would that change colors or only give you fonts?
If, if done correctly, only the fonts, cuz it should be different colors because they have different purposes. I don't know if that's implemented that way. That's why I'm, 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 I'm also saying that it is worth investigating and. Not necessarily that it is a, a solution effect.
Hmm, okay. Okay, um, okay, well, then, yeah, let's investigate it a little bit as we're doing some of our styling stuff.
Okay, yeah, I will, I will look into it, get into where the colors are and I think I look at changing it, to see how it looks.
Okay. Sounds good, um.
Also, please send me the, the new white that we're gonna want, the new grayish white that we're gonna use.
I'll send you that hex code.
And then Chantel, I have a chat GPT design on our winner circle that kind of interesting. I wanna send it to you. First of all, let me know if you can open this link.
Okay.
And then. If, if it opens for you. Be curious, we could recreate maybe at least the top ring of it. I thought it was pretty cool.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a cool glow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I do wonder if we'll be able to get that in.
Yeah.
Like Android because it's got a lot of highlights and shadows gradient.
Yeah.
I have an idea that might work. I'm not for sure, but I think I could do it. Uh, the same way that I did the gradient line that worked for Amin. I might be able to do the same thing with this.
And then, um. Let me share that. Could you share it into development? Um, and I want to ask Amin another question. I mean, one more question for you. We were talking about implementing, if you remember this design for a while, from a while back for the winner circle. And, um. This could go a couple different ways. First of all, are you able to see the image from that link she sent?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Um, we could do this as like maybe just a static image or the, you built the wheel and I'm wondering if. It would be. Pretty straightforward to do this as a wheel or should it just be like an image and we just insert the pictures in the image? You know, obviously that's the easiest, but. If it's only like slightly more challenging to do the wheel, then I'd be interested in it, maybe?
But like the exact design with the gradients, shadow.
Well, yeah, maybe, I don't know, um.
Yeah, that would be true. That, yeah, that, that would be a lot to do it, um.
What about just the borders, like the ring around the images?
The ring, yeah, would know those inner shadows and that, uh, without the inner shadows, then yeah. Cuz the shadows, inner shadows and all that goes, that goes. Uh, I never done it, so I'm, I don't even know for sure how I can do it.
So maybe we'd be better with this just being an image that doesn't rotate?
Well, yeah, that's, that, I was gonna ask that. Do we need this to be like interactive? The user can rotate it?
No, we don't.
Um, if it's just, I think we can do it as an SVG.
Yeah.
And then from there, we can have the images go there dynamically.
Would SVG work? Like, uh, would, would, wouldn't we lose some of the gradients, shadows and things?
Either, either we do it through the SVG or we do it through the cloud and every transformation. See how like we have in the map, we have the three pins and also how we have the um. The groups, images, that it's uh, um, based on five users' images and all of that.
Yeah.
That we do it through ordinary where we pass them the image and there is like a template there and. London A takes care of having the image placed in the correct place, so. And it's gonna be an image in the end. It's not gonna be an SVG, so. Everything will be saved, like the shadow, everything will be there.
And it would go on the, the background, like the image would just go over the background?
Yeah.
Be tricky to do too.
Like, which, which background?
I was looking inside the circle, like, let's say the top one has the gold, gold background. That'd be like hard to do because you would have to cut out the person's head.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah. And also, we need to remove the, the background from the user's image.
That would be tricky.
I mean, cloud generally, they do the, like, they have a way. To what you to remove the, it's, it's not gonna be looking good, I guess.
Yeah, you would, cuz some people have a dog as their image, you know, it's like.
Like people, some people like, there's different backgrounds, so.
Yeah.
Perfect every time.
True. So we, we wouldn't worry about the background inside these Chantel? Because it would actually just be a whole image. So be more, more so be like. The rings, the wheel, the rings on it, and then it'd be cool if we got the glow. Off the top. I, I think that's a nice touch cuz it makes you feel like number one is worth more. Would we be able to, um? How, how would that work? I mean, should the whole, the whole thing be one SVG? How how would that work, I mean, should the whole the whole thing be one S V G? Like this whole square? I mean, are you there?
I was gonna mute, I was I was saying, yeah, like the whole thing can be. On the one S V G and and I'll work on it then. And if I might need something from Chantel, then I will let her know, but yeah, I've done that before, so we can, we can do it with cloud and every transformations.
Okay, well, cool, we'll see, see what we could do with this, Chantel, um. It'd be interesting. That's, I like it better than the original, the original is kind of basic.
Yeah, very basic.
But it's kind of cool if we could do it. You said you're getting the old chat tone now for text messages, chat messages?
Yeah, so last night I was getting um. The one for chat messages. And then just now I got the do 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 do, which is the standard Android native one.
For a chat message?
We're sending the sparkle too short or or nil to one signal. So. Like, it shouldn't be sitting like default or. But yeah, it shouldn't be saying like default system or or the woo sound.
Why would it do that? Um you, when did you say that started happening, Chantel?
Last night, I sent it in development when I noticed it.
Does it ever do the right sound?
Yeah, yeah, typically, it does.
Let's see if Todd's also getting that, like, why don't you send Todd a? Message on Android and Todd, if you could turn on your audio on the Android. Does it do like the harp chime sound or does it do the woo?
Let me get one of the. I'm on my phone, let me get my one of my test phones to send to, hold on.
Okay, I mean, I could send you a message.
Uh in production or to a?
Um, production, right, Chantel?
Yeah, so last night I was in production and now I'm in dev. So last night when I was getting there. I was in production, but the native one I just got is in dev. Just now.
Okay, John, try um. Send me a message. To Aria, now you're in uh production, right, John?
Yeah.
Okay, to Aria Monroe. I got it and it was the normal tone that you'd expect.
Okay, the chime?
Yeah, the time.
Okay, I wonder if Chantel's phone's got the ghosts in it, maybe cuz like. Past builds and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I got it, it it looks like at three P M yesterday, I thought it was later, but yeah, I guess it was at three.
Okay, we'll see if it clears it up when you get the next build.
Yeah, the other thing I noticed, which was really weird over the weekend, that I don't recall ever experiencing. Is I was in production and then overnight, when I went to open up a notification. Um from production, I was in development and that happened both Saturday and Sunday and this morning. I guess all three days. So I don't know how that happens, but my phone was just automatically updating.
You you to uh the latest version of the app?
Hmm, yeah, so I was in thirty one or thirty two, whatever's in the App Store. And then I um. I would wake up in the morning and it was back in dev.
That's weird, that could explain why you're getting some weird behavior too.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep an eye on that, um, did you mention anything else? I thought there was something else you mentioned Friday or maybe over the weekend was a problem.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember if that ever got addressed on thirty three. Which is dev right now. I got a um a critical error, crash bug.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I don't, I hope we look, wait, did we, we looked into it?
I don't recall, to be honest.
The native code. That might have also been related to the. Your phone, um.
It looks like it's because of a keyboard issue.
Oh, that's right, and Amin's been working on that, okay, so that that should be, we'll we'll get a Q A build today.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we'll test a lot, let me.
I wanna bring up one more thing real quick, and I mentioned this last week, I was trying to get some, get it from Jerry and anyone else that. Might have some input, but I I I. Chantel is um using her same main account. And on two different phones at the same time.
Right.
And I used to do that too. But I was having similar issues.
I I think, I don't.
I stopped doing it altogether because it was annoying.
Right, I think.
Problems.
Yeah, I think that would be a safest bet, if Chantel, if you could stick with just one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz there it's, I think it's introducing issues.
Yeah, I know Jerry didn't didn't think so, cuz I think he said he he does the same thing. And maybe he's right, I don't know, and Jerry might be right, but I swear I was having more problems than not when I was using the same account.
Well, Jerry doesn't jump between in Android and I O S, though, either.
Yeah, that's possible. I only use I O S.
Yeah, see, what, Chantel's going between Android and I O S, were you going between Android and I O S, Todd?
Yes.
Uh huh. I I was uh a while back and I was not having any issues other than notification delivery, which was sort of expected.
Yeah, okay.
Causes problems, though, in diagnostics here sometimes.
Yeah, it does overcomplicate, I I suppose we should avoid it because it's not a real world scenario.
Yeah, it's gonna, cuz then we're facing ghosts sometimes. Okay, let me get to Omits cuz you guys landed for a while there, hey, Omit?
Uh yes, John, like, let me say my, like, you told me to check about business hour, no?
Yeah.
So here currently, what our API is returning to back end, it's returning hours like Monday eight A M. To this, to the eight A M, to like this way, this is example of a tech to you. And here, uh we what we are taking, this is a response from the Google API, we are taking weekday text.
Yeah, look above it where it says.
And here it is current opening hour. A current opening hour, it is open now, status will return you to.
So it does tell us.
Yeah, it will tell us, but we need to call the Google API real time then.
Which we suspected it does tell us, so, but we do we not call the Google API every time, we probably don't.
No, we are not calling Google API every time.
So is there, is there any kind of simple way of doing this without causing a bunch of um extra calls?
What if we just calculate it from, um, we can calculate it from the backend without calling Google? That's where I was saying we. Can calculate the time zone based off the address. And then we have the the opening hours. And we just know that opening hours are based off of the local time zone.
Okay, hold that thought cuz that's a good, good point, but question here, Omit. Um, do we do any routine check, like how, what happens if they store?
Or routine check, like we have added, like what we have added now, like every two months or nine sixty days, they do remember what we have added there. Let me check. Uh we were like, like last, we were, previous post, I think we have added some logic there. Check the business.
So if they do change their hours, we would be able to update them.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Like once a month or something like that? And. I guess it doesn't work for the open closed thing cuz that's kind of like a real time thing, it's not like.
Uh the same, uh thirty days, we have thirty days.